Ladies and gentlemen, everyone, welcome. I would like to officially call this meeting, this joint meeting, to order. Is there any other committee that needs to call a meeting? Does anybody else post this meeting besides us?
Yeah, the Black, it was my face mask. Blackstone Board of Selectmen is already posted.
So you're opening your meeting as well?
Blackstone Finance Committee is posted.
And we'll open that meeting as well.
And Blackstone Capital Outlay Committee.
Okay, anybody else post a meeting? All right, so we'll officially open those four meetings and we'll start with...
That's the fastest one.
Oh geez. The Pledge of Allegiance, if you don't mind. If you can stand. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle of the great just for all.
So I'm thrilled by the audience that we have here today and the participation. I thank everyone for making time in their schedule. There's some important topics tonight and we'll start with introductions. I am Jane Redio. I am the Chair of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee.
I'm Ryan Chamberlain, Board of Selectmen.
Mary Bolso, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Bob Kuchet, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Tony Gettino, Capital Outlay, Blackstone.
Olivia Bevo, Capital Outlay, Blackstone.
Johnny Pollock, Board of Selectmen, Blackstone.
Ryan Barry, Finance Committee, Blackstone.
Brian Scanlon, Finance Committee, Blackstone.
Ross Nickel, Chair of the Capital and Finance Committee.
Brad Weissman, Town of Blackstone Finance Committee.
Jim Watson, Town of Blackstone Finance Committee.
Sax Alinsky, Finance Committee, Blackstone.
Sarah Lockins, School Committee, Millville.
Erin Bonaco, School Committee, Millville.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Carrie Goddett, School Committee, Blackstone.
Tim Howell, School Committee, Blackstone.
Phil Walsh, Finance Committee, Blackstone.
Peter Crusoe, Town Administrator of Millville as well as Capital Program Committee Member.
Matt Owenworth, Assistant Superintendent, Blackstone Millville Regional.
Sarah Williams, School Committee, Blackstone.
I'm Greg Smalley from DRA Architects.
Matthew Plank, Capital Planning Subcommittee Board.
Community Committee, Millville.
Robert Dubow, Chairman of Blackstone Board of Selectmen.
And Jennifer, just joining us, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Jennifer Gill, Chair of the Board of Selectmen in Millville. I did tell Jane I would be exactly on time or a few minutes late.
Yep, she did. Perfect timing, all right.
No Dory?
I am actually going to turn this meeting over to Dr. DeFalco and Mr. Aronworth to talk about our agenda topics, about opening this, a little bit about opening the school since it's going to be in two weeks. So, we are going to open. We are going to have people return. And then the other topics on the agenda, so.
Awesome, thanks Jane, and good evening, everybody. It's really nice to see everyone here tonight. And we have quite a few important topics to discuss, so we'll just jump right in. But I do want to share with everyone, this is always my favorite time of year because it's just before, kind of putting those final preparations in place to get the students back. And that's why we do what we do every day, is for the 1,700 students that walk the halls of our building. So we're really excited, even though we're opening in a challenging time still. This will be our third school year dealing with COVID, which is interesting. And we are still opening with big smiles and a lot of enthusiasm, excitement, and a lot of energy, even though we've had more summer programming in place this past summer than we've ever had. And we have eight programs running, with our last program starting on Monday of next week that will run for the full week, Monday through Friday, to really give kids a jump start before they start school the following week. So we've had over 450 students participating in our summer programs across the eight of them. We've done some really great collaborative work with the Boys and Girls Club in town, servicing our students while they're at the club, in math, English, all hands-on, kind of project-based learning, in with some additional counseling and clinical supports. So we're really excited. We've got great plans in place for the school year, from additional programs to additional interventionists, and support for students, and help our teachers as well. So we have a lot to look forward to. And a couple of just important dates to mention, we are going to be welcoming our new staff tomorrow, actually tomorrow morning at the high school. We have our new staff orientation, so we're really looking forward to welcoming them to our EMR family. And they will be with us for a couple of days this week, Thursday and Friday, not only learning about our school community, but also touring our communities. We're going to be doing a bus tour and showing them around the town. It's important for them to get a sense of the landscape and learn as much as they can about Blackstone and Millville before we start working with our kids. So we're really excited about that. We also have coming up our staff development, two staff development days, and our orientation with our faculty, all faculty. So we'll have all of our staff back, almost 300 of them, returning on August 31st. And August 31st and September 1st will be staff development days, where we'll be making sure that all of our classrooms and everything is prepared and all those kind of final touches that we need to make to make sure that our classroom doors are ready to be opened and greet our students on September 2nd, which will be our first day of school. And it's the only day that week that we have school. It's almost like an orientation day for kids, to get them acclimated and moving. So we're really excited to be launching into the school year. I know it's during a difficult time for a lot of different reasons, but we're still very enthusiastic, very excited, very positive, and can't wait to see our students. I will be sending out to all of the boards our welcome back, just to be a short welcome back video, but we'll actually capture all of the different programs and supports, different focus areas for the year across our four schools that we have to look forward to. And I think one of the things that we're, I don't know if we're most excited about, because we're excited about a lot of different of our adventures that we're going into, but equally as excited about is bringing our elementary school students together. That was a big lift, a heavy lift, and we're really thrilled to be having our early learning center, if you will, at Millville and our elementary school at the complex. So we've done a lot of work to make sure that that transition is seamless for students and staff, and we're really looking forward to welcoming our families together at the elementary grades. And speaking of which, it's probably a good segue, Matt, if you want to share a little bit about some of the work that's been done to date around the elementary bus routes?
Sure.
Because I know that that's been a conversation in many of the different boards, and this would be a good place to discuss some next steps and what we're going to go from here.
Absolutely, thank you. So this started a long time ago. Dr. DeFalco and I took many bus rides between both towns to try to make sure that we could get the kids to those buildings safely and within a reasonable amount of time. So there were a lot of trips that got taken. The second step that we embarked on was checking the routes to see whether or not buses could pass one another and what the best configuration or flow of traffic might be to get parents to be able to go from one building to the other building in the event that they have kids at each of the schools. In doing so, the Director of the Transportation Company, Neil Telstone, who I know some of you may have saw last night, he took a bus ride with myself, Peter Crusoe, and some others from the Highway Department. And we identified some areas where it might be difficult for buses to pass, mainly because of branches sticking out from trees that might hit the windows if buses were trying to pull a little over to the sides to pass one another. They were, we were worried that branch limbs would be going through the windows and that would be pretty ugly. So the decision was made, we went back to the road and just a small section of Thayer Street where we realized buses might have to pass one another, we decided to do some tree removal. So we spoke to the town and we put the work out to bid and we ended up removing a bunch of trees. And then the next step was we had to replace some stones, some stone walls that actually just got displaced from the tree removal. And finally, just in order to secure some, like some small parts of the shoulder, there was some recycled asphalt that got stamped down and just off to the side to reinforce the shoulder. That work all happened, that's gone very smoothly. The neighbors were fine, everyone was communicated with. In fact, a couple of the neighbors came out and were extremely grateful. They were like, oh gosh, thank you so much for getting rid of this. They couldn't see people coming down the road when they were pulling out of their driveways and such. And to date, it's going, that part of the work is completed and looking like it's done effectively. The next step that we were trying to address is the path of the buses. Because there's going to be so many buses going to Millville Elementary now and there weren't that many buses in the past, there were typically around, I think, five or six, maybe even less. And now there will be 20 buses that need to get through in order to get kids from both sides, you know, both sides of the two towns. And the Director of Transportation Company, Neil, once again, he and I sat down and we looked at the routes, we spoke with the police chiefs, and we were saying it might make sense to try to have our flow of traffic go in a one-way direction down one street and another direction down another street so that parents that were leaving the complex weren't trying to pass buses that were exiting. So we made the buses go in one path and parents go up a different direction so that the buses could come out via Orchard, via Orchard Street. And essentially, we had a meeting with town administrators and police chiefs, Dr. DeFalco, myself, Neil was there, and we had the discussion of what made the most sense. And we came to a conclusion that it would make the most sense to set up this traffic pattern, direct parents during the first couple of weeks of school, just to let them know where they should be going so that they're not bumping into the buses, and reassess the situation based on what happens with the flow of traffic and kids being able to get to school safely a month later. So we booked a follow-up meeting in September to reassess, but our interim steps were that we're looking to have some police presence at the corner of Lincoln and Orchard, just to stop our parents from turning down that way, and just kind of direct them to say, in order to keep this traffic flow going, you want to head up towards DePrater and either turn on DePrater, or if you're coming from the Millville section, you can turn on Thayer directly or DePrater, either one, because they'll both end you up in the same spot. And last night, actually, at the Blackstone Board of Selectmen meeting, there was some really good conversation and a discussion was had about signage and possibly putting some, just not enforcement signs, like a one-way sign or road closed, but just some directional signs towards the school to give parents an idea of where they should be going. There's actually one in Millville, if you're coming down Lincoln Street and you come towards Thayer Street, you'll just see that small sign and it says "School," and it points over to your left. So we got that information today from Chief Gilmore, which was extremely helpful. And right away, we went out and we assessed the ride from Blackstone to MES, and we identified a few spots where it might make sense to have those directional signs to help guide the traffic. And our next step is going to be hopefully to get those signs made as quickly as possible and see if we can get them up and running for the first couple of days of school so that they are, they are working in conjunction with some police guidance. And Chief Gilmore said that he would be very willing to have support at that corner of Lincoln and Orchard for us. And the Millville Chief of Police, we decided that it wasn't going to be necessary on the Millville side because if you're coming from Millville, you're going to make a left down either Thayer or DePrater, and that's the direction we want people to go in. So we thought it would be best to use the police presence at MES for the first few days so that they could be there just helping direct some of the traffic and greeting parents and letting them know that it's all within reach of it. And that is, I'm sorry, Mary.
I just wanted to clarify, last night, Chief Gilmore made it very clear that Orchard Street would not be a one-way to the residence. This is strictly the school flow.
Thank you for that. And that was part of the original conversation between the town administration, school administration, and the chiefs. We did say, we're not looking to have any enforcement changes, we're not looking to have one-way. We just want our parents to know where to go so that it's not causing a jam. And quite frankly, as we discussed, it will become pretty apparent to those people trying to travel in the direction. If a parent comes and tries to make a right on Orchard to go up to MES while the buses are leaving, because they're going to be leaving in waves, they're going to have a heck of a hard time. And really, Neil has mentioned in the past, especially just another piece of the reasoning, I know everyone's a bit distracted.
Get back, you want to give people a second?
Yeah, I will, I'm sorry, while this is getting passed over.
Essentially, several pages of study.
The most important page is really the first page, has really the summary. So if you want, you can, you can really just focus on this first page that has the UDC, that will be the one that we discuss when we get to this section.
When we get there.
Well, that's why I said, when we get to this section, when we get to this.
Four pages total, Scott?
There are four pages total.
So if I may ask a clarifying question while we do this.
Lincoln and Orchard.
For two weeks. Millville's going to have a police officer for two weeks, every day up at the school?
Yes, that was the conversation that we... Now, with your discussion of Millville's here, that they're going to put, from what we understood, they're talking about with DePrater, is they're going to put a sign over it, or a bigger sign from the left? So, yeah, so actually, we have some handouts. That's where I was saying, they're really, we're looking at just directional signs that would be visible. Again, they're not traffic enforcement signs, but there would be one at the end of DePrater pointing up, pointing up toward Thayer, just so people would know, make the right instead of the left. I'm not sure, you might even be able to see Lincoln Street if you pull up enough and look to the left, but we want to make sure that people know where they're going, so.
Visuals coming around now.
Oh, excellent.
I spoke to Chief Gilmore this morning before he went to schools and spoke to you people, and I, and he went over the sign situation. I had, I spoke to him saying that maybe we should have Telstone work with him on the sign so he knows it loud and clear better.
Yep, we did.
Small signs.
Yep, so that's a perfect segue into what's coming around now. So Neil actually, I sent, Neil and myself reviewed the streets and we went out and actually viewed where we thought it would make the most sense to put these directional signs. And it's definitely going to require some explanation, but that's, that's the package that is going around now. We'll wait till everyone gets it. Couple, couple more. So.
You know, school committee members can pass theirs on to somebody else, if we can get them tomorrow.
Just every other person needs one, really.
What?
Every other person could share, really.
I can, and I can look on. I think they're just coming around.
No, I was sharing with you.
That's good.
Tony needs one, Tony needs one.
So pardon the chicken scratch, this was myself and the business office assistant kind of giving ourselves diagrams for what it is that we were going to order. So we really just did this today, and I thought it would be beneficial to bring for this meeting so people got a better understanding. So on the first page, you see looking out the front, the front window of a car, that's Orchard Street to the right, the car's on Lincoln Street. And the idea was, if you see kind of right in front of the house, there's an existing street sign, and there's a little square drawn on it. It's a rendition of a square or some type of geometric object. The idea was, in that area, to potentially put a sign that says either Millville, you know, MES or "School" with an arrow pointing straight upward, so that as people approach Orchard, they'll be able to see not to turn right, that they'll be directed to go past Orchard Street down toward DePrater. What you'll see on the second page, we looked at, we looked at the layout of the corner of DePrater, and I think there's actually private property there, so we were not looking on the, the corner approaching DePrater, that's private property. So we weren't looking at putting any posts or signs there, and we were thinking, if it's past the street, it's not going to make enough sense. So our thought was, this, there's some trees that are right prior to the end of the block, right when you're coming up towards DePrater. So we were thinking we could just get some, you know, the small metallic signs made up and post them into the tree that will say "School this direction," so people will know to make the right onto DePrater at that point.
Correct, you will be working with the DPW, because I believe the towns have a right of way for signs.
Yeah, we, I appreciate that. And we, I literally, I literally got this information this afternoon from Chief Gilmore, and we just started working and trying to move quickly to identify where we would think the signs made sense, so that we could order signs, so that we can then work with DPW to get them, you know, to get them posted. We were worried about what the timing would be for getting the signs. We did put, I know Jimmy Sullivan has directed us to some sign-making companies in the past, so I did put a call into him, but we'll, I'll talk to Brian Malali as well, and we'll, we'll make sure that everyone is on the same page and that we're making, you know, we're doing the same thing in both towns, essentially. That, so that last page is actually the point that you were making earlier. So if you look at the last page, there's, that's DePrater running into Thayer Street, and the idea was that we would either on that street sign that's there or on that hole where the stop sign is, put another sign that says "School" and pointing it in the direction of MES, so that people just know to turn right on Thayer in order to get to the school safely. And those are really the three places. We looked at a couple of other places. For example, we knew coming up Lincoln Street toward DePrater, we could put, you know, there's other options for, well, we have the right sign there. Where were we thinking? There were a couple of others and we just felt that it was overkill, essentially. These were the three that we really felt would make a difference, because once a person is coming toward Orchard, if they know they need to keep going, that's going to lead them to DePrater, and DePrater is going to tell them to make the right. They should be all set there. Once they hit Thayer, Thayer, the sign there will tell them to go down Thayer Street to the right. If they're coming, if they happen to pass it, that was the one we were, we were talking about. We were going to put another one on Thayer from Lincoln, saying to go to the right, and I leave this to other people's opinions, quite honestly. The thought was, if they've gone that far, they probably know where the school is, and typically, anyone going to the school would be traveling in the opposite direction where that sign already exists. So, and we also were saying, we don't want to encourage people to go all the way down to Thayer to make that right, so we didn't want to put the sign there. We just said, make it Orchard, we'll direct them down, you know, I'm sorry, make it just on DePrater, not down to Thayer. We'll direct them in that way for the first couple of weeks, and we'll see what happens. Part of the conversation was also that we would...
I think Jane had a question, Matt, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jane.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's signs directing people how to get back, because my concern is, we've got, you know, kind of one-way roads, so people aren't passing the buses, but if I drop my kids off first and then I leave Millville, I'm probably going to go down Orchard, or I'm going to go down, like, how do...
Excellent point.
We need to have the direction to get people home, too, I guess.
That actually, I was going to kind of go with that same question. Are buses using Orchard both directions, or are they coming up DePrater if they'll leave in Blackstone?
The buses are only going one way.
So they'll come up DePrater as well to come into Millville and leave Orchard?
Yeah.
Up Orchard. Up Orchard.
They're going to come up, yeah, they're going to come up Orchard and leave, yeah.
How are they leaving? How are they leaving?
If you give me one second, I can pull...
So we're putting up, considering putting up signs for people, doesn't it take like one or two times for you to figure out how to go?
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm not even concerned about signs, I'm concerned more about those, because we said the police officers would be at Millville, but I'm, I guess I'm concerned that maybe the police officer from Millville should be at Orchard or DePrater, depending on which way we want to send people back, so we don't send them back down the road, we don't want them to go down.
And just hold the sign that day, "School traffic."
Will you guys be sending something out to all the parents regarding this?
Yeah, we absolutely will. And we're, we're going to be sending a communication that's very clear, that will explain the routes, there'll be a diagram of the routes, and there'll be communication also that explains that on those streets for residents, there's no restriction. The residents that need to go wherever they need to go are certainly welcome to do that.
The town administrator of Blackstone sent mail to everyone on Orchard Street to let them know that the bus route is going to only be one way. That's already happened.
And I reached out, we're going to make sure that we have the same language, and I'll probably work with Peter and Chief Landry to get that communication out to Millville as well. I already mentioned, Chief Landry is talking about possibly using the reverse 911, and we're going to craft a message, and I believe Chief Gilmore is also, was also talking about sending one out. It hasn't gone out yet. I just want to pull this up to make sure I'm stating the right pieces. So the idea was to have DePrater Street be traffic flowing in one direction, going from Blackstone towards Millville, Orchard Street going the one-way from Millville towards Blackstone.
And that was including buses?
DePrater and then, correct?
Right, so, yeah.
That includes, yep, and that includes the buses.
And Matt, if I could, when we met last week, I think Chief Gilmore had talked about putting an electronic sign at either Orchard, at the end of Orchard or the other, DePrater, is that still something he's thinking about?
I think that was an idea that was floated at the initial meeting, but I think at the meeting last night, it was discussed that that might not be necessary. I think the most important thing is the presence there, especially just for the first, just for the first couple of weeks. And then if we do have these smaller signs that are permanent, I think they'll serve as reminders. We also, I was going to say before I missed your question, Jane, at the initial meeting, as many of you may know, sometimes parents need retraining, so maybe after Christmas break, we might have some supervision again, just to make sure people are still, you know, following the appropriate pattern. And then maybe once or twice, if there's bad weather, because those are going to be the times that actually really make a difference from a safety perspective, because as Neil described, what happens is people will turn down Orchard, the bus is trying to come this way, and they don't want to wait, they want to go around, and they pull up an embankment, and then they just slide into the sides of the buses, and it becomes a mess for everyone. We want to avoid that at all costs.
I know a question as well, Matt, you, Mary had mentioned that it's not, the one-way street doesn't apply to residents, just residents of those streets?
Just residents of those streets, yeah.
No.
Well, there's no, so, so to be clear, there's nothing that's being, there's no traffic enforcement that's going to be happening with respect to how they're driving. At the times that we're going to need the traffic to go in those directions, the predominant amount of traffic will be from the parents going to and from the schools. So the hope is that as long as we get people to... So the hope is that as long as we get people to know what the flow is supposed to be, it should go smoothly. And with the signs that will be directing the traffic loosely, so to speak, I think anyone that is in the town around those times of day will, will know, okay, you know, it's school time, I'm going to follow, I'll follow the school pattern, so I avoid any kinds of issues. And again, the roads are narrow. The buses and cars can pass one another, but it just creates a situation that becomes a little more risky. And we just want to make it as safe as possible.
Can you revisit the times, Matt? Just remind us what times these one-way?
Sure. So the thought was, and again, they're not, there's not going to be any postings of the times. There'll just be those generic signs that point in the direction of the school. But the times should be between eight-thirty and nine-thirty in the morning approximately. And then, uh, between maybe two-thirty and three-thirty in the afternoon, maybe two-forty-five to three-forty-five, but, but in that band of time.
Just to reiterate, because I, I know, um, Chairman Gill just mentioned it. As far as Blackstone goes, any resident in the town can go up there, we're not going to make it a one-way. There will be no enforcement of that. This is a, um, a temporary exercise to, to help. There will be no making it a one-way or at, at any of those times. So if someone goes up there, they won't be taken in or stopped, you know, obviously they're going to be guided to do it, but there won't, there won't be an enforcement of the one-way.
I guess we can see how that works.
Well, and that's, that's exactly the purpose. So we're going to try it out for the first couple of weeks and then the, the administration of the towns and the district and the police chiefs that already have a tentative meeting scheduled again, a couple of weeks into the start of school to assess how things are going.
Sounds good.
Mary?
I have another logistical question and Bill Walsh is here, he may be able to help with this one. Have you consulted with the trash hauler for Blackstone? We have trash and recycling included in ours. And I know currently now, it usually comes by the high school around Thursdays at seven-thirty and screws up traffic. So when does it go down Orchard Street? Have we talked to them about adjusting their schedule if they need to?
I've not spoken, I've not spoken-
Because the trash truck will take up three-quarters of Orchard Street, right, Bill?
Right.
Does that typically happen at that eight-thirty?
I don't know what the schedule is now, but I know it does, it is an issue. And it, I don't know what they're regularly scheduled on Orchard Street.
Yeah, if you check with, uh, Colleen at the building department's office, and she can get you an exact time, what time to get down Orchard, because they do start at seven o'clock in the morning.
Okay. That's very helpful, because those are the things that, um-
And if they're going during the bus time, maybe we can move them.
Correct.
I'll definitely, uh, reach out to Colleen and we'll, we'll address that. Thank you for that. Very helpful.
Matt, I guess the idea that we discussed last night, we had that right after a couple, two or three weeks, we want to revisit this to see how, we want to meet with you guys and kind of the chiefs or whatever and just see how this is working out. Do we have to adjust the plan because, you know, we're going to have hiccups?
Yeah, we scheduled a meeting already for September, I think it's September 22nd, for the chiefs and the town administrators and all of us, the DPW, to get around the table and talk about like, you know, what worked, what didn't, what should we be doing differently?
It was a really great conversation the first time, very productive. Everyone just put our heads together and, and, you know, trying to make sure that we can get the kids to school and keep everybody safe. And it's definitely, we can't, we can't foresee that it will be the perfect plan. This is the, the best-laid plan that we could, that we could formulate at this point. But again, it would be important that we revisit it.
Anything else on this piece? All right. So the, the next item on the agenda is to talk a little bit about some of the work that we are doing and need to do, um, at the high school. And actually that, that piece will kind of segue nicely into the update from the Capitol Planning Committee, which I believe Sarah, um, Sarah's our chair of the Capitol Planning Subcommittee and I think she's got an update for everybody. So those two pieces will kind of fit nicely together. But, uh, that was the, uh, the document that Scott was handing out a little bit earlier to everybody. And the page that Matt was referencing is dated July 30th, 2021. And that's really the main document for this part of the conversation.
The UEC logo is at the top left, so you should see the, you should see the UEC logo at the top left of the, the main page. So just to provide a general update, this work came about, um, DLS does just random stop bys of buildings. They check on, um, how people are doing with respect to their AHRRA compliance and making gains toward removing asbestos in buildings that have been identified with-
Now, do you want to share what DLS and AHRRA are?
Sorry, DLS is, uh, the Department of Labor Standards. And the AHRRA is the asbestos, it's an asbestos management plan. So, um, as I'm sure many people know, we have some asbestos material in the high school. There's also some, um, the complex, which is the tiling in the complex. That is the, the asbestos material in the complex is in the nine-by-nine tiles that are on the flooring. And it's, uh, it's a relatively easy encapsulation, as long as the tiles are not disturbed and they're waxed over and we maintain that, which we have, uh, that's not an issue. Where we have run into, um, not necessarily issues, but, uh, when, when DLS came by, they did a site visit. Apparently they brought up some references from, they've stopped back in 2012. They came in a few years after that and a few years after that. And essentially, it's not that the district hasn't been keeping up with what they're supposed to do, it's DLS wants to see more progress made towards actually getting rid of the asbestos. So at this last, this last pass-through, uh, they, they, um, wanted to meet, I set up a meeting with the state and the, and the school district. Scott attended a second meeting with me. For those of you that, uh, are not familiar with Scott, Scott Hebert was just, uh, appointed as our interim director of facilities for the district. Given the number and magnitude of some of the, the work that we have going on around the district, it's, it's a really important piece and that he's been a tremendous help so far and we're still, uh, looking towards the rest of the year. But the meeting that we had, um, they essentially said, we'd like you to present a plan, uh, to us for getting rid of everything. And in those conversations, we said, we could give you, you know, a five-year plan and ask for a ton of money to, to remove the asbestos. However, we're currently in the process of going through a capital study and having Capitol Planning Subcommittee meetings. And we don't know what the next steps for the district will be. So we would hate to invest millions of dollars in a remediation plan to then find we may not be using that space or we may configure it differently or whatever changes may need to be made, get made and that might, that work might have been wrapped up in it. So the plan that you have laid out in front of you in our discussions with DLS, we essentially said, the, the asbestos-containing material at the high school is in the fireproofing spray. So it's above the ceiling tiles in the B and C wings. And the concern was that the ceiling tiles have not been disturbed or, or in some cases, they may have been disturbed accidentally. But the, the worry is they've aged significantly and some of them are damaged. And the concern was that any of the asbestos debris that over the years fell onto the tops of the ceiling tiles, because the ceiling tiles have effectively been encapsulating the asbestos for a significant amount of time. That as the tiles degrade and as there might be damage to those tiles, some of that material could penetrate that barrier. So the scope of work that you see in front of you is to make sure that that barrier of the ceiling tiles is solidified and that it's safe for people to be in the building in the interim while we determine whether or not we're doing something different with, with the building potentially.
Was this just a visual of damaged tiles or did they test for dust? Because I'm not, typically fireproofing foam is not a friable material. The insulation around the pipes that are up there is.
Yep, there is insulation, there's insulation around the pipes and there's, um, the, the spray. They did, they did actually test, um, well, actually, the consulting company that we've engaged, they're going to be doing tests, um, more tests. But DLS insisted that those areas that they could see potential damage to the tiles, they needed to be replaced and that barrier needed to be solidified regardless of-
So just the title, tiles, not abatement?
Yep, just the tiles. So it's not an abatement. So this first phase that you, um, see, we, we planned out over the next few summers so that we could effectively budget for this process. The first, the first piece was this summer 2021, which actually just happened. They should be, I think, uh, Scott just did a walkthrough today and they are completed with the initial work that they're doing for this summer. What that, in that, what that entailed was they went through all of the B wing and C wing and they identified any tiles that they, they felt could get damaged or were already damaged. And they either sealed or replaced any of the damaged tiles that were currently visible that posed the threat of allowing anything to, to come through. The next two summers that you see listed, um, they basically split up, one summer would be B wing and one summer would be C wing. They're going through, what they're doing is they're, they're going above the tiles, they're cleaning any dust or debris material that is on top of the tiles. They're clearing that all out, vacuuming it out, wiping everything down, then they're resealing the tiles. And as, if the tiles are damaged, at least this past piece of the work, they replaced any of the damaged tiles. The next two phases of the work will entail a bit of the same process, going up above the ceiling, making sure that the joints and the drop ceiling are tight, that the tiles are secured in. But they're going to replace all of the ceiling tiles so that they're not the 20- or 30-year-old ceiling tiles that have been sitting there. There'll be new ceiling tiles, they'll be sealed properly and they should, they should prohibit any of the material from being able to, to come through that barrier.
Sorry, Matt, one more. Did this work have a hygienist on board with air quality testing or was it just mechanical work?
No, all of this work is being supervised by, so UEC is our, the consultant that we
They're very good. Amar is very good, I use him all the time.
Yep, Amar.
I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, they're, they're, they have a hygienist that is testing everything as the, as the work is being done. And part of the scope of work will be as things get, uh, sealed or replaced, they're going to be taking samples, they're going to be doing testing, and then they're going to be coming back in and doing follow-up air, air testing.
Well, the reason for my question about the means and methods was I thought they hadn't tested above the tiles yet, but they were removing them. So apparently they do know that there's hot material.
The building has, they've known, in the past, the AHRRA report that's existing essentially assumes every bit of material in that building above those ceiling tiles to be asbestos-containing. So in order to prepare for a new assessment, we're making sure that everything is sealed off and then, uh, UEC as part of their consulting work, they're doing a new three-year, they're doing a, a full inspection and they're doing a lot of the spot and site testing and air sampling. And then they've put together a plan for continued air sampling on a, I believe it's a six-month basis regularly and that will, that will help with the monitoring.
Matt, I have a question. So what about the A wing and the cafeteria? Is that being addressed or is that-
That's not, yep, that's a safe area. Anything in A wing, it was, um, does not have that spray in, above the ceiling.
Neither does the cafeteria, the gymnasium?
Correct. It's very, it's isolated to the B and C wings. Did you have a question?
It was more just a question, just to make sure I understand that the purpose of this is really just to create a barrier. So we're not touching anything, we're just maybe sure nothing is coming through with the replacement.
So, yes, and, um, it's removing anything that's there also.
It has fallen.
That has fallen, yeah. So, yeah, not to be confused, I apologize if that's not clear. They're not removing any of the asbestos, uh, material. They're only cleaning the tops of the tiles and removing any type of debris that may have already become friable and may have fallen onto the ceiling tiles.
But just the damaged ones, not ones that are previously anywhere else?
So this past summer, so this past summer, they're, they did the damaged ones. So they went around, they identified anything that, that had evidence of a possible leak and they sealed it or replaced it based on the, um, the-
Nature.
The nature of the damage. Scott, I believe, purchased how many ceiling tiles?
Five hundred.
Five hundred ceiling tiles just for this past piece of the work. The next pieces that are scheduled for next summer would be going into the B wing first and replacing all of them to make sure, not the ones that they just replaced, but all of the older ones. So they'll go back up, they'll make sure they clean everything out, they're going to replace the stuff and they're going to make sure that it's properly adhered to the joints of the drop ceiling so that there's no, that the barrier is tight and won't allow anything to pass through. And then that following summer, they're going to be doing, um, the C wing. And the idea, we met with, um, Janet from DLS and we had to appeal to DLS to allow us to take this, this, uh, course of remediation, so to speak. They want us to get rid of the asbestos. But they're willing to work with the district because we have a plan to make sure that the building is safe, we're addressing their concerns and we're in the process right now of assessing what we may or may not do with the building as a whole. And, you know, they were very understanding of the fact that we don't want to say, yep, we're going to set up a $2 million remediation for next summer and then we decide we, you know, potentially submit a statement of interest to MSBA and we, we make changes. Because if that happens, then the remediation would be built into the whole larger-scale process.
Matt, um, well, that was kind of one of my questions was, so you received the penalty notice, this will suffice the penalty notice?
Correct, yes.
For a certain amount of time or is it like until, like the decision deadline on it, is it?
Uh, no, this timeline that we've outlined is acceptable to that. And then, um, the penalty, the penalty compared to, quite frankly, the, the civil fine that it references, the total of that was like a couple of, a few thousand dollars, maybe eleven thousand dollars. So the work that is actually necessary to suffice for them to feel that we're doing the right work is going to be more, is more than that.
Matt, if I can just clear it up a little bit, this is only on lower B and C wings because the fireproofing is on the C wing, on the lower wing.
Yes, uh, you have the funding for the summer of '22 and '23. Is this going to be through the school's regular budget or how else?
So, so we do not have the funding for '22 and '23 because we cannot commit to funding because it doesn't come from the district, it comes from the town. So we can't commit to any funding and, and everybody's well aware of that. What we did commit to as a school committee was to put it through the process of the FY23, FY24, which is what those budgets would be. But, so the next two fiscal years, it will be in our budgeting process. And part of the discussion we want to have here today is, I believe, and I think the school committee believes, that the, the expectation of these funds, um, just so you know, you have to take the 195,000 and you have to add the 100, the 28,000. So the two prices have to go together. Um, and then the 175 and the 26.5 have to go together. And so that is much more than just a, uh, an expense that is a general revenue expense. Those are capital expense-type projects and ought to go through capital planning committees and, and, um, be part of- and, and be part of capital funds requested of the communities.
What would be the breakdown between Millville and Blackson off of FY22?
Depends on the, depends on the, the numbers of students.
So what would it be as it stands now?
Seventy-two, twenty-eight-ish?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
About that.
Rad Weisman. So I guess my question is, in 2022, if all we had was $223,000 in capital, right, because that's the 2022 number, if all we had was $223,000 for the school committee, is this the money, is this the project you would spend it on?
From a capital perspective, uh, yes.
So nothing else? So we're committing now? So this, this is where, if this is the last dollar you had, it would go to this project?
In our conversations with, with DLS, we do want, we have, you know, we have expressed that we would commit to sticking to this plan. Again, I can't foresee other emergency situations that may come up, you know, as there's also, sometimes funding comes in from other sources. So depending on what emergency needs arise, I, I don't want to tell you 100%, this is where that money would go, but it would be the, one of the priorities.
Are there any grants for this?
There, we asked about that, they said that that funding dried up somewhere in the 80s to 90s when this stuff was all supposed to be removed.
It's a long time ago.
Did you do this summers out of E and D or how'd you pay for the 32 grand or whatever?
So, um, we recently, given, given the past year's operating costs, there was a lot of money that we ended up diverting towards PPE and other needs for, for COVID. And we submitted to MEMA, FEMA for reimbursement for some of those funds. And we just received notification that we should be receiving a sum of money from FEMA as a reimbursement for the costs that we already paid for this past fiscal year. So the intent is to divert the larger portion of that money towards this summer.
Matt, I think that's the same program the municipalities could apply for, for reimbursement.
Yeah, it is.
So it's the same, that's, so you're probably familiar with that. It's the same program that, the town side, you could put in for your reimbursements too and get that money back that you spent on. So we, we went after, because we could, so we were able to use some of that. You may have done the same thing. How much was the reimbursement? Or what, yeah, what did we get, 75,000?
Seventy-five thousand.
So we need about half of that to cover this. Yeah, it was the same program you all probably used to.
And by doing this work, is that going to open up kind of a can of worms? You know, are they going to be in there looking for more as they go once we start going into the, the other two or is this, they know the scope of work they need to do, that's going to be the price? And it's not, they're not going to come back and say, oh, well, we quoted you for the 195, now it's going to be 215?
That's a great, that's a great question. These are, again, they're quotes and they're in advance, significantly in advance. That, it's not the expectation, but I can't foresee the exact number of man-hours it takes or if something happens. But to your, the, the original piece of that question, they're not going in and looking for other things.
Okay.
This work itself, the scope of work may cost, you know, that cost may vary, but they're not coming in and trying to find other stuff that they have to do, no.
And you had said that you had already got, what was it, three quotes from others or we just got, you just got the one from the one company?
So this original scope of work that you're looking at was a proposal from UE, UEC. The first scope of work, the summer scope that actually just happened, we got the three, we got three quotes for that work. We've not put the other two summers out to bid yet.
And we cannot until we secure funding in some form. And, and that's really the discussion, you know, here today and one of the main reasons for bringing people here today is to figure out, you know, what makes them, we have to do the work, so what makes the most sense to move the work forward.
And as I look at this, it doesn't jump out as any ARPA-related type of funding. I don't know what the looming infrastructure rules are likely to be, but probably not, right?
Yeah, there's, there's not, it's not a significant like remodeling, so it's not going to trigger any other, any other costs. But we also, we, we tried to look into, to your point, the ARPA funding or anything and it, it doesn't qualify.
And so if you didn't do it, you'd be fined, right? You know, so, I mean, it's not, forgetting the safety aspect of things.
That's really the, the big ask. If we didn't do it, they wouldn't, they wouldn't open, they would essentially tell us we.
They would shut us down.
Shut you down.
They shut us down.
Gotcha, okay, so you have to do it. You have to do it.
Yeah.
I have a second question, what was the change? Because they assume the ceiling was like this for the last 20 years and no one said anything.
It wasn't a change, they just, they said to us, you need to accelerate the process of dealing with this issue.
Yeah, every, every old district building in the state of Massachusetts has had these inspections and, you know, sometimes it's an issue that just kind of, well, you know, okay, you did a little more this year or you painted over or you seal, or you waxed the floor in the complex or we put carpet over the floor, whatever. So those little things, well, now we're done doing the little things, they, it's kind of like our turn was up, it was our, our, our turn.
Well, they do, so they, it is, it's a great question, like what happened that triggered this? They do walkthroughs randomly of districts that are on their radar. And apparently we were cited in 2012 and we were cited again in 2017, I believe, was the year. And this was, they just, they said, hey, I wonder where they, where things stand with them getting rid of the asbestos. So they, they came by and they did a walkthrough of the high school. And, you know, they look at the plan, they see that there's potentially friable material up above those ceiling tiles. They did an inspection and said, these tiles look damaged or there's, you know, some openings that could potentially cause a threat. And that's when they said, we need to, we need to pop in.
Sort of follow-up on that too, like if the roof was leaking and the ceiling tile got wet, they're just not sagging, which would leave a tear gap? Or if a student walked down the hallway through the backpack up and hit the ceiling tile, pop it out of place? It's something as small as that.
Yep.
And to Scott's point, which is an excellent one, there are other pieces of this work that need to be done, but it's more internal controls, inspection and, and of that nature. This is what, what's being presented is the large capital fixes that need to happen, but Scott's been designated, he's been named our designated person. We've developed a plan in conjunction with UEC, like cleaning methods that we need to utilize, inspections that need to take place regularly, logs that need to be regularly completed and possibly submitted or, you know, be ready to be submitted. So there's that aspect as well, making sure that we're monitoring it all regularly. Because to Scott's point, we, our number one priority is the safety of those people in the building, students and staff. Anyone that walks through our buildings, we want to ensure they're safe. And it can happen, like Scott said, a bag can go up. And what's the plan for that? If, the teachers will know. Part of this is notifying the, the staff, notifying the community that these are the circumstances. We've posted on our website that, the notification. And, you know, Scott is aware now as the facilities director, while he's doing his rounds through the buildings, while I'm doing my rounds, we're checking in with custodians. If there's any disturbance of those areas, we need to address it right away. And we're prepared to do that.
Now, can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, I, sure, I'll, I'll go to you first because you spoke and then I'll go right here.
So if we knew, if we knew about this in 2012, 2017, why did we kick the can down the road? Why wasn't it addressed back then?
That wasn't here.
I can't speak to that.
No, I'm not saying you, but I mean, members of the school committee or whatever.
I don't know that any of us were.
I mean, some of you were here in 17, why did you kick the can down the road? I guess that's the question.
I, you know, I don't want to misspeak. I know they, they, they listed a couple of years, I don't want to say the specific years. The 2012 may have been the last time that they came, I'm, I'm not sure.
They were definitely into the book, I was on the board and Shaver would absolutely know about this issue. Because when I did a tour here, this issue was, they were well aware of it.
Yeah, because the cost back then.
So, wait, 2021 now.
Yeah, and the cost back then was going to be substantially less than it is now.
If, if Dr. DeFalco and I listed all of the things that we've been trying to address that have been kicked down the road, we would probably be here all night.
Open, open.
Also, I mean, that, that raises a good question. What else has been kicked down the can, kicked down the road that we're going to have to address?
That is agenda item number?
So, so some of those things we've encountered just as they top up. And we just kind of addressed them as needed. And that's, our philosophy is if something happens, we're going to fix it and we're going to address it properly.
There's not an endless supply of money though.
We're going to start looking.
No, can I just, can I, I'd like to speak out, that's okay. I think it's important to mention, we started this work a little over three years ago and we had a real heavy emphasis on getting in place the right materials and resources, get the right stuff in the hands of the teachers and kids so they can have to teach the right stuff the right way. So we've started with a heavy emphasis on the instructional side of the house, so to speak. Do you think, everybody would probably agree that makes sense in terms of making sure that we don't miss a minute with students learning. So we continue to focus on that, but what we have done is shifted some of the resources, the time, energy and effort to say, okay, now that we've got a lot of the infrastructure, the instructional infrastructure right, now we've got to look at the actual structures themselves and so we're putting a lot of focus there. What we've done in the meantime, those past three years, we've started to, to address certain issues with, you know, whether it was a septic issue or leaking roof issue that needed to get fixed from the roof that was put on at the complex or whatever it is, we've addressed those smaller projects as we've gone. And in the midst of that, started our capital planning committee, had the capital assessment done, this is now backing us up another year or so, but had the capital assessment done so we actually knew where to start. So that was a little bit about, like what else have we done? That's just a good question. We actually started putting the process in place to figure out what is it we need to do while we're fixing a lot of the teaching and learning work.
I definitely think putting the first dollar towards education and curriculum is, is the most important thing, I don't question that, I think that's great. It's just in terms of, as mentioned, that there are other things down the road, like how do you, if you were to put $15 as an example towards a $25 project, then you at least have $15 towards that 25 and you're not coming to a 25 all at once. So like that's the objective in terms of how do you begin to put a little bit more away each year so that your ask is a little bit more, you know, manageable or palatable.
And I think what Matt's saying, and I don't want to speak for you, Matt, but at least my, my perspective on it isn't necessarily kicking the can piece, it's more of, you know, continuing to find things, right? It's like, for instance, we inherited a really tricky situation with the roof at the JFK AFM complex. It took us walking the roof, myself with Matt, town administrator, all kinds of individuals, three or four times.
I believe it.
And dragging the, the installers out, the original installers that wanted to do this, 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 this and this and pointing everybody else except themselves in order to get the roof fixed. So that took us about 18 months. So when Matt's saying the kicking the can thing, I don't think that's really what he's saying, I think what he's saying is we continue to find these projects that we didn't even know were issues until you're in a classroom, watching a teacher do some instruction or looking at what the kids are doing and you look up and there's water coming through one of the lights.
I, I apologize, if I mentioned kicking the can. I was saying, we're finding the cans that got kicked down the road. And as soon as we can identify those things, so initially, as, as Jason mentioned, the things in our first year, we started in the middle of, you know, right toward the beginning of the school year, we were focused on the curriculum, we started identifying that these things were happening. Nobody really, the two of us at least, didn't say, we're walking into this district and there are things in disrepair. But then as we, as we settled in, we're saying, we need to really get a better look, we're addressing the things that became evident. And then that's when we actually, as, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, we, we initiated an entire study of all of the mechanical systems, electric system, the buildings, the grounds to assess the situation so that we could do exactly what you're referencing, which is get ahead of it.
Yeah, right, and my question is not like specific to school committee related, but just any sort of budgeting process. Like if you want to do a home renovation, you don't say, oh, we got to do a home renovation, let's, let's find $25,000 tomorrow, you begin putting money away for it, that's.
That's the capital planning assessment that we had done.
That's where we are.
And I would say that we didn't commission out the school committee commission then because they knew that this was a major focus that we needed to take on.
So, and, and we, you know, we, we have listened and we have heard the towns. It has been asked of us for many years for that capital planning project, many, many, many years. And we've, we've heard that and we made that a concerted effort in the same time really trying to keep the general revenue budget request, the, the regular operating expense request at percentages that towns could live with. I mean, I know it's, it's, it increases every year, I know that, you know, the, the percentages, but we've really tried, like we've really, we've gone back, we've made the school administration go back and, and bring us budgets that were more in line with what our towns could do, knowing that this capital was coming and we committed to doing, to getting a three-to-five year plan out there. And that's what, you know, this, this group is doing. What do we need to do now? What do we need to do in the future? Where is the direction, is the direction going? So, so you all that are sitting around at the table need to be a big part of that. Like it's not a group of eight school committee members who ultimately have to make these decisions for this, these two towns in this community, this district that we have and live in and educate our children in. But there are some major, major projects and this sadly is not one of the ones any of us were thinking about. Like this, you know, I'm sure is on the list in the booklet, but wasn't something we thought was coming first, second or third. You know, there's a, a committee that's looking at small projects, big projects, massive projects and it's, it's, it is a financial piece that we have to figure out as, as a, as a group sitting around this table.
And I want to come back to your question, I apologize.
Yeah, so I can do things, but firstly, I can just echo what you just said where it's something I kind of mentioned to a few members of our FNCOM as well as Jennifer on the Millville side about, I do think it's important to have at least some kind of FNCOM representation from both of our boards plus our FNCOM committees much earlier in the process just so that we have visibility. And then as we're looking at planning like the budget for next year, we're doing that forecasting for a three, five-year plan, whatever it may be, we're much more adequately prepared for things like this as they come up. The second thing that I wanted to bring up was just more of a general request to see if we could have like a facilities tour of some sort for those of us who have never been in the high school. I have very young children, it's going to be over a decade before I really have a need to go into the high school, let alone even the middle school. So I, I would personally just like to see the, the state of the, the buildings just so that I have a better idea of what we're actually talking about, like from a visual standpoint.
Great idea.
Can I give the select one also, I represent?
But we would love to have as many as possible. So if you want to be included on any of the invites, I mean, it's an open meeting, it's a public meeting, but I'll send you all the meeting dates. Just shoot me an email, shoot Matt an email, either one of us, join the board, I mean.
That would be great.
And we, we lost our Millville representative, so it would be great if I know that that's a struggle.
The process, coincidentally, just it started and we sent out invitations and we spoke to people, but then there were transitions that started happening. So I think we, we ended up, some people weren't able to keep their commitments and things just.
But we, we did ask for representatives from each finance committee, each board selectman, each capital planning group.
When was this? Just so that I know.
May? April or May? Right?
A year ago.
A year ago.
Were you serious?
Yeah. Yeah.
So the other April day?
Yeah, that one.
So is there, is there a breakdown of how this company got to these numbers? And then, select one and also, you said you had done work with them before, obviously there's probably, this is going to have to go out to bid, so we're going to get a high, a mid and a low number to be able to, to see what's going on. But yeah, is there an actual breakdown of how they arrived at these numbers?
So for the first piece of the work, that summer 2021, I have the three bids, there's quote, we have quotes that outline all of the work that each of the company proposed. I have those, I have those three bids. And NG was significantly, they were, they, for the same scope of work, they were significantly more reasonable of a cost. they were significantly more reasonable of a cost. We don't, I don't have an entire scope, again, from that, the next two summers, because we haven't had the money appropriated to, to put it on.
But they do have to go out to bid.
They will, absolutely.
And that's what it says in this thing that they have.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying is, obviously, they, we, you shot, they shot higher. And hopefully, you know, when we get the bids out, it's going to come in significantly lower, but.
No.
So, no, so I can help with that. So Amar typically will look at the market and includes some escalation. He understands that it goes up a little bit every year. This year, it's four to six percent typically unless there's mechanicals involved. And he also, he'll put together a bid specification so that everybody bids the same apples to apples. And he, ninety-nine percent of the time includes unit prices. So if when you get above the tile, or you have an extra tile, you know beforehand what that change order is going to cost. So you're not at their mercy. That's one of the reasons I like to use UEC. They have it down pat like that. So, and then he will vet the bidders. He will make sure they're qualified, make sure the certifications are up to date, make sure they have their licenses. And when he shows up on site, that's the first thing he does is check their licenses. So it might not be the lowest bidder, it'll be the most responsible and responsive.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, obviously, go with the lowest bidder, but, you know, I just don't want it to be a shell shock of, you know, hey, one ninety-five would be like the mid number, and obviously, you know, two-ten would be a high with different, different people. So, you know, as far as appropriating the money, thinking about it, you know, logically.
We should consider contingency, obviously, but unfortunately, the architect just left the room. My abatement prices have been coming in fairly low. As I said, the wild card lately has been anything roofing and anything mechanical.
This is why we're glad Mary's a part of this, because I don't know anything of what she just said.
Well, when he comes back, he can.
We're glad she's been a part of the capital, the capital planning group too.
Brian, Ryan, I can show you a, I can send you one of his specs if you want, for example.
Yeah, no, like I said, just purpose of discussion, you know, people see a big number like that, and they're like, okay, well, how did you get to that number? And obviously, the work needs to be done.
So I think, I think Amar knows, so they sent, they sent their representatives out to do a full assessment of the building. So they know the scope of work that needs to be done for per square footage or number of ceiling tiles. And then that's what they did. They did an assessment of the B wing, they did an assessment of the C wing. And he, you know, he extrapolated the numbers from, from there. And again, as Mary mentioned, I think he applied, you know, a cost factor increase. He has been, to Mary's point, he's, they've been terrific to work with. They've been very informative, and they've been helpful with guidance as well for how it is that we need to develop our plans and make sure that we're staying on top of all this work.
The question just came up over here, Matt, and I didn't know the answer, and I'm not sure that there is one. My understanding is this is kind of what the state accepted in terms of a three-year process.
Correct.
Four-year process even an option, or like, this was what they, this was this, and that was that?
Yeah, I was wondering that too, if you could do half of one floor and then half of the other, and then.
If you did a three to a five.
Mary says no, okay.
It's going to cost you more. It's going to cost you more. You're going to have to quarant, you know, quarantine off the area, do extra air quality testing. You're better off to shut off one whole wing and go at it, just flood the ceiling.
That was part of the design.
You don't want to pay a hygienist twice.
There we go.
Right. And the state wants it gone, or wants it taken care of. This was a compromise.
This is, this is a compromise.
This is a compromise, and, and they are going to be closely monitoring that we are taking care of what we're saying we're going to take care of, as well as following up with the, our own internal inspections and the maintenance of the, of the area as well.
What does a fine go for?
The fine? Oh, I was saying, the fine was only a thou, eleven thousand dollars.
It's not the fine.
It's not the fine, it's them saying that we'll shut you down.
No school!
Well, we've relocated, you know, on an emergency basis, but that's certainly something that we would prefer to avoid with, with the towns. And I will say, Janet has, I certainly hope that it doesn't come to this, but the DLS is not looking to shut schools down.
Right.
They, I mean, if it's absolutely necessary, they may be willing to work with us. But to Mary's point, the plan that was outlined is the most cost-effective plan that we thought we could get away with.
And, and we have said all along, we need to care about the safety of.
Exactly, making sure.
Could you elaborate a little bit? You talked about your evaluation of what you're going to do with the high school. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Does anybody have anything else on this?
I got one more question. So when DLS, when DLS comes in, are there any more things that came up that are issues? You know, outside this asbestos thing, because you're saying this came up in two thousand twelve, correct? Like, two thousand twelve, we would have had a whole decade to prep for this, which I think would have been great. You know, are there any other things that came up with this, that these reports happened, that we should know about now? Maybe we could prep and not have a situation like this?
No, they, they came in specific to.
Just with it, okay.
What are the trial?
Right, no, I understand the ceiling. I just didn't know if there's anything else, because if you could say.
So there are other things, and that is D on the agenda. I mean, that's, that's the book Sarah keeps.
It's an excellent question. To your point, they came in this time specifically looking at the asbestos. Are there things that we also need to address? Absolutely.
Just something we should, you know, put on the back burner that, you know, maybe we can prep for now? So we're not, you know what I mean, we're not doing what we're doing right now, you know?
And that is, that is the purpose. You're, you're spot on.
Does every, does everyone have this? Has everyone been given one?
The towns have, but I don't know.
I don't believe everyone has been given one.
The towns have though.
But can I ask you a question? As the former head custodian of this building, the driveway is one of them.
Well, just make, you know, just as like a presentation, like, we have a meeting like this, it's great, but like, if there's more stuff, I mean, I don't, I mean, it's just going to be easier for us to figure that out, you know?
In the capital plan, that, what Sarah is referring to, there are, there are multiple projects for every building that are all laid out with estimated costs and timelines.
So, and our, and, and we've had several presentations. I don't know if we did it in a joint meeting, maybe we didn't. Did you, did we do a joint? But we've had several, our school committee meetings several times where we've gone through the three, five, well, one immediate, which we did some work this summer. Immediate, three, five, which is outlined in this capital planning study review about, about exactly that. What are, what are the balls that are going to drop?
Right.
Next year, three years from now, five years from now? And, and if you have not seen a copy of this report, please reach out to any one of us to, to get you a copy. It is really in-depth.
So I, I.
Is it posted? Can we just post it?
I was, I was going to jump in. I know we're going to get into the conversation of what has been going on with the capital planning. Not to steal any thunder.
It's been stolen.
But one of, one of the first things that we did just, we reviewed the plan, and we went through, and we went back to the buildings, and we tried to identify certain things that we had already addressed. So what we're doing right now, one of the first steps, is, is like revising the plan a bit, like tweaking it to say this has been addressed. So removing certain things and seeing what the next steps are. So I can certainly, I can post the plan, I can send, I can take the, communicate the emails that are here or get everyone's email, and I can send it to everyone. But I would want everyone to be advised that there have already been modifications that we're currently working on to update it. That, you know, things have been addressed already.
It's a workbook.
Yeah, it's a workbook.
Well, like the MES project was in there.
Correct, yeah.
Are we covering everything in that book? Like, that's a very thick book.
No, no.
You have your coffee, so you'll be good.
Okay.
Yes.
Negative.
Page one.
No, I just have, oh, go ahead.
Wouldn't the first step be, if you're doing capital planning, to send a copy of the book to the capital outlay committees of the various towns so that they can at least have some idea of what your expenditures are from zero year to year ten?
So the study, so the first thing that we did was, we invited members from the community to join the capital planning subcommittee. And that was the first thing that we did on the subcommittee. We distributed the plan, we reviewed the plan, and identified certain things. The, the plan itself has probably a lot of things identified. It doesn't lay out the plan and the, and the financial scope that we're choosing. So it essentially is.
It shows you the cost.
It shows us the, it does show the costs of everything.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say, here's what we're going to do this year, and here's what we should do this year. It has recommendations on like a sliding scale of within one year, within five years, within ten years, within twenty years, and this is going to be the cost associated with everything.
Yes, but with all due respect, if you can, you can put draft on the top of the plan and indicate that it is completely tentative, and it still would be a great deal of value to the capital outlay plan is in the town.
Yeah, and with all due respect for that, we did reach out, and I have the emails to show. I reached out to every single committee that we could think of to send a representative to be, to participate, which then, that representative, in my opinion, would have had the responsibility to go back to their board and say, here's what we're doing, here's what they're talking about, here's where we are. And every meeting that you've had, Sarah, has been taped, taped, and on cable, and there are minutes. So we, we have been trying to do that. If that message is not getting back, then I think you need to speak with your representatives or on your boards, you need to appoint somebody to that committee.
Well, I mean, in the interest of moving forward, now you have new board members all along, you know, start fresh. Let's, you know what I mean, we're all here tonight to do it.
Yes.
If I, if I may, the board of selectmen appointed Mary Balsall to that board.
Yep.
If the finance committee hasn't got anyone appointed, maybe they should contact the chairwoman of the school committee, and they can get somebody on that right away. We have a, we have a, we also have a delegate that's a, that's a citizen, or maybe two of them, I believe.
I think two.
Yeah, so therefore, there's people that, this just began.
Yes.
A month ago.
Well, April, March.
Well, we just appointed ours in, probably April.
Yeah, it was April, all right.
Yeah, no, and I completely understand that, now that you have, we have all new, almost all new members on PINCOM and, and stuff like that. I mean, open lines of communication.
If we can just get, if we make it easier for everyone, she would have all the information if you could send it to the town administrator. And I'm sure all the members of the board selectmen would agree, we'll make sure we disseminate it to everyone, so everyone will understand.
Thank you.
We do post all the meetings too, just so if you want to, if you're, if you, you know, if you want, if you're interested, you're not on the committee and you want to attend, they're all open meetings, so we'd love to have.
And we'll officially appoint you, or your board can appoint you. I mean, we are looking, we are begging for people to be involved in this process. We are not saying, you know, the door's closed and you had your chance. We are begging for people who want to get into the weeds of this. This is the weeds. This is the dirt. And we need to get into it, and we need the people, which is why I keep looking at Jennifer, because I'm like, we need, and even around the.
I keep ignoring her.
We need some people.
And I can assure you, there's no one that wants to be the one person that decides what's happening. That's the, the committee. We want everyone's voice. We want all of these opinions.
So I was just, our next capital planning committee meeting, because I also chair that committee, we need, do need people in Millville, is September thirteenth. So Matt, I don't know if you wanted to maybe mark that on your calendar to talk about this asbestos? And then Sarah, it would be if you could come and present perhaps a high-level overview of the plan. And I can show you the spreadsheet we have for our capital plan, we go out five years. And this, in Millville, it's sort of a new committee as well. We've been around for two years. So prior to that, we did not have a capital committee, or not an engaged one, perhaps is, I don't know. I don't want to throw anyone under the bus.
We're going to be starting our budget process in October, so, you know, we'll have to, obviously, Millville. If the more information we can get earlier, we can try to work in our place. And we're really looking at doing our budget a little different than most years, with a zero base. Really digging in, trying to get some cost savings. So obviously, I think all of us want to get all the information so we can make informed decisions for the overall cap, right? And so, you know, I appreciate that you guys are doing this, you know, capital plan. I think all of us, it's a lot of information. I'm sure you're going to give us some more here in D, which obviously would help inform the bigger decisions that need to be made, but, you know, thanks for doing this, Sarah.
Thank you. We're happy to have everyone around the table. That was great.
Keep it this big.
Ready to go to D, let me get the big paper.
No, no, no. So this is going to be a very high-level overview, like Jennifer mentioned. We started meeting, we started meeting in the spring.
April twenty-first.
Right. We spent the first couple of meetings just going through the report in detail. We'd had it since it was released to the school committee. But it's a lot of information, a lot of questions, and we needed to update it to reflect what's already been done. We then established a facilities working group to take care of some of the smaller capital projects that we thought we could handle and that we should, we needed to handle. It was based on urgency and our ability to handle them. That looked at things like LED replacement and looking for energy savings. We kept referring it to, as the low-hanging fruit, taking care of that where we can. We're setting up a playground assessment to address issues that were brought up in the report. Again, they were at both facilities, and, again, that was more of like a capital project that we could handle on our own. We've moved on from that to start talking about the direction of the district curriculum and programming, because that's what's really going to drive what we want in our facilities. What do we need in order to accomplish, you know, our master plan as a district? We did, we have started speaking about the pros and cons of different configurations. And when I say different configurations, I'm talking about, are we looking at a new high school? Are we looking at a new middle school, high school? You name it. Everything's still open, no decisions have been made. This is very early in the process. But it's a big deal, and that's why we need more people from all of the committees.
That, that conversation was going to be tonight's meeting.
Yes, yes.
So we started, yeah, we started the process of kind of organizing thoughts of where grades might be, or where grades should go together. Not necessarily the space or the buildings just yet. And then Greg, Greg is here from DRA. His company did the assessment, and then we've engaged them again. Sorry, not to cut you off entirely. We've engaged them to help lead this work because they have significant experience in it. And that's where, to Sarah's point, what configurations are possible, what are the pros, what are the cons? That was on tonight's agenda, which we then transformed into this meeting. Pretty much where we are. Greg, do you want to speak a little bit about kind of the process?
Yes.
Not to put you on the spot, you've been quiet there, but speak a little bit about like the process that we've been going through and some of the, some of the thoughts.
Sure. Typically, what happens when, when communities go through, you were, the district was behind the curve in its capital improvements, planning and scheduling for it. And so the first step is to figure out, and really try to define what it is you own, its age, its appropriateness, but more importantly, its physical condition. So we did that report through Q-three, Q-four of two thousand twenty. And we came back with a report that is pretty typical for a district of this age and buildings of this age, meaning that you've got a, a number of items that should be addressed, such as the asbestos, and were brought up, but then were overlooked or neglected or put off to one side. You also start to face the fact that buildings age. And as they age, they become less and less usable for, for their, their use. So we put together the assessment report, and then we looked at the amount, the, the square footage that the district owns relative to the number of students that are in the district. And we said within this report, perhaps you want to look at rightsizing the facilities to the district. And that's the work that we're doing now. One of the reasons for doing that is it allows you to start to compartmentalize some of your capital expenditures. You don't want to spend money. You don't want to spend money on a building that you don't necessarily want to own, either in its current configuration or at all. So that's the step we're into now. And that's when you start to look for other people to come in. So you don't want to take this and look through it and go, oh my God, we need to spend all of that money. Because if you do it right, you won't spend all that money.
Interesting point that was just made there. This asbestos work in your report, this asbestos work, does this asbestos work get recommended in a building that you want us to own?
Asbestos would always get recommended, because by federal law, it needs to be gone. So asbestos will always get recommended to be taken out. Any of the hazardous materials is always a given.
So say it was cosmetic work, new windows, would you tell, would you still want us to... In the same buildings that we're doing the asbestos removal, say it was cosmetic, new carpets, new tiles, would you still recommend that we maintain, like, say the work was different, not required, would you still recommend that we maintain the building?
At this point, in this process, no.
No. So this is gonna be a sunk cost that we have to do just because we have to do it, because it's required by the state. So at the end of the day, it's sunk money.
Yes.
It's lost, we'll have nothing to show for it, because the long-term plan is that we're not gonna be in the building. That's not true?
There's no decision yet.
Okay, okay.
They're doing this instead of doing the, that's why I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you're doing this in lieu of the very expensive full removal process, which is something that if you decide in two years from now, three years from now, okay, we are gonna keep this building, then you decide to make that investment. But if you do that investment right now, and then in two years from now, you know, we spent two, three million dollars to remedy this, in two, three years from now, we decide, all right, we don't want it anymore, then we've sunk a lot more money than this plan, which prevents the building being shut down, which is the worst possible scenario. You know, is not doing this at all, is, you know, shutting it down. This is safe, it keeps the building open, and it allows us to sort of have a deal with whatever this group is, the state, to make sure that, you know, whatever the next steps are, we spend the money as efficiently as possible, so.
Very well said.
I have, that was my one good statement for the night, so.
It's a combination of buying time and prioritizing where you invest, until you know where you want to go. And that's always the tough part for a community that has buildings and has had them for a while, and they've become part of the fabric of the community. So it takes a while to start to understand that those buildings came about when there were already other buildings that were liked and loved, and things are changing. So it's, you're moving from an assessment, you've now got eighty percent of the pieces to put together a good twenty-year capital plan. And then with that, you need a master plan for the buildings, so that you're not continually investing in buildings that you don't need.
Structurally, for the high school, is it sound?
Structurally, it was built in a different era. It is structurally sound, it is, it's in great need, is the best way that I could say it. It's, if we were to take a tour of that building and show you what's going on with it, it needs a lot of work. It's an old school building, built in a much different era.
Have we yet done a cost analysis? I mean, maybe that's not where we're at yet, but just to see, like, is it even worth trying to keep it, update it, and do it versus just completely replace it?
That is the work of the current effort, is to look at what at one point was probably a district of twice as many students as you have now, with no real forecast for you starting to rise back up. No one in Massachusetts, except for the inner cities, is doing that. So it's kind of rationalizing what you own for facilities versus what you need to invest in what you do own.
And really, how to, the conversation, and Mary could speak to it too, or anyone on the committee, we've been talking about where do we want the curriculum and the programming to be in X number of years? So are we looking at, you know, career development programs? Are we looking at, and where then do the buildings fit in? So it's not necessarily just, we're gonna use this one, not use this one. It's what could this look like, what could this serve as, and how does it, you know, how does it all work together to accomplish the program of the district and getting the best education we can give to the kids? So we, to your point, it's great, I think the latter part of a study becomes, do we keep this, or do we remodel, or do we change this? We haven't gotten to the point of what should the configuration or the layout look like?
No, I just wanted to call on Greg to explain the options that you're required to go through in order for us to qualify for any projects through Mass School Building Authority. Just a brief, well, the three basics, so that...
What Mary's referring to is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which will share some of the costs, contribute to the cost of either repair or replacement of a building, renovation of a building, or, and so what's needed for that is this assessment, a capital improvement plan, a maintenance plan, and then a submittal, a statement of interest to the state. And in that is, there are a number of steps that you need to demonstrate to the state that you understand what you own, how you're going to teach in it, and what, how these things work. And the, the state typically gets about a hundred applications a year, and will typically approve somewhere between seventeen and twenty of those per year. When they make a commitment to you, it is a legally binding commitment from them to, for their share of the funding. And so they're very particular about who they bring in. And the town, the district has not been successful in the past, because it lacked a lot of what we were talking about earlier. It did not have this planning, and therefore, the state's going to look at you and go, you're not serious enough about what you own. And that's really what they're trying to tell you, is that they're not putting their money on the table, which is all of us who buy anything in the state, one penny of the sales tax goes to this program. And it's irrevocable by state law, so they, they get a penny, they've spent fourteen billion dollars, Mary, something like that, on schools, and it's not stopping. So it's a great program, it's very well structured, but you have to come to the table really ready to show your side of it. And we're getting there, between this, what Jason and Matt and the School Committee are doing on the curriculum side, because as opposed to a lot of states across the country that I've worked with, Massachusetts actually cares about the curriculum. They want to know that five or ten years from now, you'll be teaching in a particular way, and this building's going to work for you.
So as part of that same kind of assessment and looking at the school plan, are we also looking at the, our current situation in terms of like the number of kids and the cost associated with school fees? And like trying to provide whatever it is that they're not getting within district to bring it back, just because I've seen the costs around it, it's kind of shocking. I'm definitely personally curious to know what is it that we're not able to provide, that's blocking to go out, but...
So what a big, a big answer to that question, we spent a lot of time in the committee talking about this. We have about a hundred students. So of our, of our school choice students, that choice, we got about fifty kids that choice in, and we've got between a hundred and fifty to two hundred that choice out, depends on the year, kind of give and take a little bit. But a hundred of those go to BBT. So to keep that in mind, we have a hundred of those, of that number I just shared, again, between a hundred and fifty, two hundred, depending on the year, a hundred of those are BBT, just a little less, a little less than a hundred. Depends on how many take, between twenty-two and twenty-six a year they take from us. So that's a huge number, right? So we spent a lot of time talking about the career development and career exploration side of the work, and how do we reconstruct our schools truly to be all things, all kids, right? But when we look at our high school particularly, building in the particular pathways that we need, which is a challenge for four hundred, a high school of four hundred and forty kids, right? To build a pathway, you have to have a certain number of students that can enroll in that. So we've got, we've had many, many conversations about, again, you start, think about the concentric circles, we start with the curriculum, instruction, programming at the core of that, and then start to kind of build out from there, making sure our facilities are wrapped around that and can support that. But that's, you know, that's exactly the conversation that we're having.
Yeah, and I say it slightly selfishly too, just as a parent of a special needs program as well, seeing the numbers around that, for like the small number of special needs students who are going out of district and the cost associated with that. I mean, again, I'm kind of curious as to what they're not getting here, but they're getting somewhere else, and I understand that we're not gonna be able to solve all the problems either, but just...
But we have about three hundred and twenty-five students with special needs, and about twenty to twenty-four, again, depends on the year, but are out of district. So about twenty out of three twenty, if you're just rounding.
Yeah, but it was, I think the last picture I saw, maybe from last year, I'm thinking, but the number for just that twenty-four was ridiculous.
It is, it's very high, yeah, it's a high number.
And the transportation alone.
Yeah, it's a very high. It's a high number, for sure.
The collaborative tuitions are the least expensive, and they start around fifty to sixty thousand without transportation.
Yeah, and that's what was kind of getting me thinking about it, just like, if you were able to actually even keep a portion of them here, like, how much of that money that we just came to send them out to get to reinvest back to the schools?
Yes, yep, so we've got two students coming back this year, and we're able to take those dollars and then actually not only reconstruct some of the programming that they need, but also bring some of the staffing in that is required, and then we can pull in other students, we hope, to add to that.
If I can help you with that just a little bit, part of the Department of Elementary and Special Education Review of any of your planning looks to make your special needs or IEP students part of your district again. So they'll look at what your master plan and your building plan is saying relative to special ed. I can also tell you that, working with Jason and Matt and your committee, some of the more creative approaches to curriculum that I've had the opportunity to work with, I typically come in and will give a bunch of ideas and have been pretty much blown away by what's happening in this district and working with the other high schools in adjacent districts. So you're on a really good start that way, it's just the curve of getting over the idea of where you've been to where you might be going.
Well, there's a lot of us who are willing to jump in and help.
Well, I will tell you, our town projections are not growing. We are not growing housing, we are not growing students, we are not, families are not having lots. We are, our numbers, it is not, that number is not growing. We are not in a community that's blossoming numbers of youth.
Seventy-nine kindergarten students this year.
Yep.
That's tiny.
Yes, they are.
Yes, when you do try to deal with these things, you've got to try to deal with them so that you don't get lost in the weeds, and that you're looking at it from afar enough away so you can see the whole forest. And that is one of the problems with coming to all the meetings, is you get into the weeds. What would help the town boards, and this is from the former chairman of the Capital Outlay, okay? Is just those documents that you have already completed, to send them over so you can try to balance what the town's needs are and what the schools' needs are, and to try and get some concept of what is both needed and what is affordable. And if you don't have all the details, fine, at least you've made a change and a move forward to some sort of understanding that you've got to deal with.
Matt? So people got to keep in mind, that high school's fifty-two years, fifty-two years old. So, you know, it's been around for a while, it doesn't seem it, because the building from the outside looks very nice, right? And, you know, I mean, when you look at the high school, you say, oh, it's not that old, but in reality, it's fifty-two years old, it's been a long time. And I'm not sure, JFK was what, sixty-two, maybe it was built? So, you know, again, you're looking at, you know, another school that's sixty years old, so, you know, you're gonna put that, we've got some aging buildings, I mean, this is the newest one we have, but...
Right.
You know, at some point, it's like your house, you've got to put money into it, and that's where we, that's where we're at today, we've got to make some decisions.
We certainly are. And I think that's what we're, we're trying to identify what the best decisions are that we can make as a community, and that's the whole purpose of this. So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that, because that's, that's the intention. We want everyone involved.
From Kuchivitz, that was like, that was like a home run.
First one to graduate from BMI.
No, wait, wait a minute.
You worked?
No, I worked. We went to school there in nineteen seventy, when it first opened, we come out of the old high school on Main Street. We were the first class to graduate from there, we're having a celebration in September for our fiftieth anniversary already. Feels like yesterday.
And we know the historical meaning of the building as well, and that's been part of the conversations also. I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's not a matter of come to the Capital Planning Committee and decide what to knock down. You know, we're trying to get a real understanding of where the district is going, make sure we are planning for the programmatic needs and the instruction for the kids, and then see how we can get what we have to fit those needs, and what we have to do to make them better fit.
I'm sure you both, everyone's willing to come to some individual meetings for FinCom, Board of Select, I think it might be a little bit, sometimes it's hard in a bigger setting. I'm sure boards are gonna have questions in different areas, so after we get the information, we can, you know, digest it and have more time on it.
To your point, I agree, my one, and it's not hesitant, I'm happy to send these books to everyone, that's a non-issue, but know that, again, these books just identify everything that they could possibly find in the district, and they lay it out, you know, in priorities, and they associate costs. That doesn't mean that that is the capital plan for the district. So it is, to your point, getting the people on the Capital Planning Subcommittee is really key. So that's where those decisions are gonna start to be made, and when we can, you know, then further the conversations with each of the boards and with the town administrators and everyone. But, again, we can get the book out, but it's the thought process and what we do with the book that really is gonna be important.
Obviously, this is a priority.
Yeah.
And I would say especially for this year, while you guys are considering the long term, it would be important, at least for one member of my board, to understand what your other priorities are gonna be this year, because this is gonna weigh against a lot of the other issues that we're facing for the town. So if you guys could prioritize, especially for this year, to get us jump-started while you're looking at the long term, that would be very helpful.
Play around, just in terms of next steps, like, for now, like, it's the next steps to get this information out to the various folks here, and then, like, we'll set up various meetings as needed, once you've digested the information.
Yeah, if I, if I could be so bold, if you get this, it'd probably be better if we could get together with your individual committees and walk you through this, because it's not just identifying capital needs, it also gets into talking about the size of the buildings, the appropriateness of the buildings, the potential cost of replacing the buildings versus fixing them. So it kind of goes from assessment, starts into master planning. It also is December twenty twenty, so it's eight months old now, there's been a bunch of work done. And it also, as Matt has noted times, we don't prioritize for the district, we prioritize by years. So you'll see numbers in here that, when you open the book, you're just gonna go, oh my God, we should just sell the town to Rhode Island.
If we could definitely get a list of the things that were accomplished, too, that would, that would help. I'm sure we can all figure it out.
So I'd just like to say, as far as the big picture, and Greg and I both know this, one of the things the School Building Authority does is they have a pipeline, and we're losing students to neighboring towns. And once we fill in our statement of interest, if we're accepted, we go into that pipeline, and we go through the various modules to get to the building process. Well, we're in competition with towns around us right now, Milford has been accepted into the pipeline, Tri-County, that's scary, they've been accepted, they're out of district, and they're expanding their school. And I think there's a couple others in this area that already have, not only we're dealing with Ben Franklin Charter School now, we've got schools around us that are gonna renovate, and that could pull more students away from us. So it's important to keep the momentum going and work through the program. The program is the most important part, not the building looks like exactly. It has to fit these new programs to get these students career-ready.
And if I can just add to that, one of the things, one of the mitigation efforts we're taking now, we've added a biomedical pathway to the high school, we're near two of that. We added, this year will be our first year of manufacturing and engineering. So we have our first year of our manufacturing, engineering pathway, that's starting this year. And then through the Blackson Valley Superintendent Consortium, we're a half-million dollar grant, which we rewarded, and through that grant, we're actually opening up the high schools in the Blackson Valley to each other's students, without losing students to school choice. So, for instance, last year, we had... students to school choice. So for instance, last year, we had students from BMR that took cybersecurity course at Hope Dale High School. We had students the year before that took Advanced Manufacturing 1 and 2 through the Ed Hub from a teacher at Uxbridge. We are offering an audiovisual program in the spring to students in the Blackstone Valley area. And so this year, we'll actually be offering seven courses. Kids take for free. And we have a coordinator that's facilitating all of that work. Each district's got about two to three seats in each of the courses. And so this year, we're offering cybersecurity, computer science, welding, and that, you know, this is just a few off the top of my head, but seven, one of which will be ours, an audiovisual, that kids can take for additional credit. So we are trying really hard, these other kind of efforts in the meantime, as we start to think about, you know, what does the actual structure need to be to make sure that we're keeping, and keeping our kids with those.
So I'm looking, I can be more collaborative with neighboring districts like that, just because it's actually making me flashback to when I was in high school in Rhode Island, where we actually had that for the VOTAC program between Tollgate, West Warwick, and Morway, where Tollgate housed most of the vocational programs in their building. But we had enough seats between the, the three schools to send kids there. And we had one, we had two programs housed in my high school, we look fancy, but everything else was basically at Tollgate.
It's that, so it's a similar concept to that. So when we had the advanced manufacturing course, one and two, that we ran at the Ed Hub, we had students with 13 towns, which was a first. And it was amazing. We had kids from, you know, our kids taking course, this course, with kids from Milford, Hope Dale, Bellingham, Sutton. And it was really, it was incredibly successful. So it's a similar concept. And we're really just, we're in, we're in year, we're in our first year of really blowing the program out and having these seven different courses. But we've done the last two years, some pilot courses to make sure we had the interest. We surveyed the students, what would you want to take? What are you interested in? We met with our, with our regional career leaders, like, you know, where is the employment? What are you looking for? If we could, if we could train on some technical skills, what would you need? And so through that and multiple conversations with the Blackstone Valley Chamber, we've come up with a pretty good, at least a start in how we can get our students through that door. Because some kids, you know, they don't know. They want, you know, remember, we're a comprehensive high school. We were never designed to be a, a technical high school. We're designed to be a comprehensive high school. So we also have to offer, and tomorrow night, our school committee will be going through our advanced placement courses, right? So, so we have a very rigorous instructional and academic pathway as well. But we also want to make sure that, you know, our purpose isn't just college prep, it's college in career. And we want to make sure that the kids are ready for either one. It's options and opportunities for them. So again, you know, if you have a high school of 2,200 kids, it's a little bit easier, right? When you have a high school of 440, it's a little bit harder, because you're trying to build these pathways and options for a smaller catch base of kids. Does that make sense to you?
Hundred percent. So then, in terms of like, like Ross was just saying for our next steps, like, what would the timeline be if you actually start having these meetings? Like, let's say if we get this, this booklet by early next week, are we talking like a week or two before we can start scheduling, getting together? Just because if we're looking at keeping that momentum going and just getting things done, then I don't want to waste time.
But the, the general feeling here is the statement of interest, the submission period opens in January, it closes typically in April. They bounced it out last year because of COVID. You, the pipeline that Mary's talking about could put you out, if you're accepted in, could put you out two years before you have to make your side of the commitment to, to accept that, any grant that may come. So the objective here was by January to be ready to submit a statement of interest. So that means finishing up what this subcommittee is doing, engaging all these other boards, engaging the public, to the point of saying we're going to submit a statement of interest. Now, you can submit a number of them and take a couple of different options to the state, but you have to identify the one that you most want to do. So you have to prioritize. So the objective is to have that ready to go in by January. And then if we have to play a little bit of time, you have January to April, January to, to, you've got about four months in the beginning of 2022 to, to adjust. If you don't make it, that's fine. You hold it until the beginning of 2023, but you've lost a year. And construction, if it goes up 4% a year, which is what it's been doing, is a phenomenal amount of money each year. And you don't get anything more, you just spend more for what you were going to get last year. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty fraught slope that you get on when you start to talk about that type of stuff. But I think if this, if the subcommittee could stay on that path and, and everybody could take a look at the report and start to engage on it, we could get a better understanding across both towns and all the boards of differentiation between maintenance, repair, and capital investment into a new or different building would help everybody to be able to explain down at the supermarket what all these numbers really mean.
And your next meeting, Sarah, is?
September 8.
September 8.
I have the whole list if you want.
I was just going to say, I was thinking the same thing. We could, we just plotted out the next six, seven meetings. Six, if you want, if we, you guys want to jot them down. We'll also send them out, but just so you get them right into your calendars. We booked September 22nd, October 13th, we did October 27th, we did November 10th, December 1st, and December 15th. And these are all Wednesdays, and the meetings begin at 5:30. So it's pretty consistent, Wednesdays at 5:30.
Our next one is already scheduled for September.
Oh, I apologize. I, that was the seventh. Our next one is September 8.
Actually, I have just one quick question, because we were talking about enrollment and where everyone is. It's been a little while since I went to BBT, but, and I didn't run for school to make sure that's where you guys make the tough decisions. Selecting's a lot easier. How many kids apply to BBT that are on wait lists, give or take?
Sure. So every year's a little bit different, but we usually have about twice the number of students that are accepted are. So, but, so we have about 20, 25 students that are accepted. I can't speak to their full waitlist, but they have twice the applicants for us.
Well, the only reason I ask that is because I, I said in the side conversation, you know, you said welding. And I.
Oh, sure.
Being a doctor led that I am go, that I went to welding at BBT. I don't, I wouldn't necessarily say we should compete for welding against them. She said, well, what about the kids who don't get into the welding program? I don't think that's a very good point. But to illustrate the, the issue, I'm just curious how many kids are actually trying, you know, to choice out.
We had three kids at the high school that took the welding course. It was a virtual welding course, and they absolutely loved it. So.
That's really good.
I think, you know, I, I think the nature of technical schools has changed over time. And I think the competition to get into the technical schools has increased the level of students going to them who really have, and I'm going to be blunt, no intention of becoming the plumbers and the welders and the electricians. They have the intention of going to the engineering schools and the, you know, the Clemson's and the wheres. And they're, and they're tremendously successful students, but they're, they're not the students who are finishing BMR and saying, what career, you know, I'm not going to college. What career options are there for me? And the, you know, technical schools in Massachusetts, and, and it's on the state board and looking at this. They're, they're taking, you know, cream of the crop and not taking the students who need to trade, if you will. So I think that the more opportunities for trade options or career options for students who stay in their teens can't be a bad thing. It's not a bad thing. The problem is, is there, are there enough students to make it a financially reasonable thing to offer in a, in a traditional high school?
Are we, are we doing anything for like those who actually are pursuing a trade as, as a career path for like apprenticeships or anything like that?
Yes.
Because there, there's a deficiency right now in the market for people who actually have these kind of skill.
We are. We're doing it too late. So we're, we're not doing internships until the last quarter of senior year, far, far, far too late. So part of the work, what we're doing in our consortium is we're actually going to be backing that up. So that when students are taking a pathway, saying in cybersecurity, not only is it a cybersecurity course, but after a couple of courses, if they're still interested, we'll actually work and place them in internships. So that they're not waiting that long.
Like the plumbers and, you know, people actually want to be electricians and things like that, instead of, you know, what I've experienced in growing up, that push to college, no matter what, whether it's really, what's that would happen or not.
In our, in our area, in our region, Blackstone Valley, what we've seen a huge deficit in is the biomedical field, finding out lab technicians and people that actually have the skill set to be able to go into that work in the advanced manufacturing. I mean, there are others. But if you look at, it's called a blueprint. If you look at the state blueprint for the career development in the Blackstone Valley area, those are two of the big areas for us. Our employers are saying, we don't, we can't fill these jobs.
This is great.
Okay, that's all I have. Okay. So for next steps, we will get reports to boards with, you know, the, and any, and we'll, we'll resend the, the notes of the meeting that talk about some of the work that has been, I know you guys developed the list of work projects, and you've got your working group. So we will send that out to the boards, but we are still looking for representatives from every board to serve on this, this subcommittee that will meet the next time on the 8th. And even if you're not appointed by your board, you're welcome.
How many openings do you have?
Yeah, there's, we don't have a set number.
Okay. Just wondering as far as how many people per board would you want?
We asked for one.
One.
We asked for one.
What you look for is, one is a liaison in case the board gets nobody else.
Yep.
So you're kind of the, you, you become the conduit. But this stuff is always better. If you could fill this room for every meeting, it, it would work that much better. Because ultimately, it has to go back out and be fully embraced by the public. And the more messengers there are for that, the better, the more successful you'll be more quickly.
I feel like we want to be involved, so send maybe in the nation, maybe my wife.
We will. We'll send it off.
You know.
How many, how many buildings have you walked through?
How many buildings have you walked through?
Yeah.
As many as I have the time to.
Matt's, Matt's been kicking it up there. He has been in very.
Do you want to know what's been done?
So welcome.
All right. Anyone else have any?
Just don't forget opens, all right? Because you're going to have to build that in.
We're building it in, Peter. We're building it in.
Talking about her. I've been hearing that.
We did, we, we have an issue.
Yeah, weeks worth.
Well, it's better than when we had a lecture session.
It's true.
It's just a scary number. He tells me that before, he's like, Jen, do you know, I'm like, please don't tell me. I'm sorry to be scared.
All right. Anyone else?
Does that please?
How do you class walk through the life?
I know that, I know that Scott would be happy to give anybody tours of any building.
That is a joke.
Scott?
I would, I would.
If that happens.
I adjourn the school committee meeting. If all those in favor say aye. Aye. Don't adjourn yours. Adjourn the board of select.
John, the board, the board of select.
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn FinCom.
Aye.
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 Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
This is terrific.
Thank you.